We did have to say no to some ideas and as I noted in particular new programs. But we have worked to find common ground and I am hopeful that this sets the foundation for future dialogue to happen with community members, our council and the executive to come.
A recurring theme on this podcast, we begin with the words of Seattle City Council Budget Chair Teresa Mosqueta, who's put together a balancing package for the council after a major decline in the city's revenue. So how authority is she wielding on the council now? And what are students at Ingram High School, seen of a terrible school shooting, saying about the council's budget as well? Plus, you thought casting a ballot just to introduce ranked choice voting was confusing? How about actually implementing it? Well, those headlines and more right here on Seattle News, Views and Brews this week, your Coffee Break Political Podcast. I'm Brian Callanan, I'm a host on Seattle Channel, the views expressed here are my own. And I am joined by none other than, can I bring him in here? I bet you I could Kevin Schofield, man about town, weekly columnist with the South Seattle Emerald. Kevin, so much election news to cover here, but I gotta say, one of the best candidates I've seen chosen in the past week, Julio Rodriguez of the Mariners for Rookie of the Year. That was big, man. Kevin, Kevin, Kevin's pumping that fist, babe. Love it.
One of his, one of his jerseys is going to Cooperstown now. When already the guy just finished his rookie year and one of his jerseys going to Cooper Town. It's so, I'm so happy for the guy. It's great.
That, that, that is one selection of a candidate that no one in Seattle can argue with. How about that? I love it. I love it. Well, thank you, Kevin, as always for joining me. Thanks to City Grind Espresso, our background noise sponsor for the audio podcast. Check them out on the first floor of City Hall. And if you're listening, please do become a patron of the show at the $10 level. You can get your special edition Seattle News, Views and Brews coffee mug sent to you. We'll even feature you on the show as our mug shot of the week. So this week we send out our thanks to James and Mary, a little pre Thanksgiving action with the turkey decoration on the mug. I see what you did there. Thank you very much for your support. And let me add some important information from Converge Media here. The Washington State Homeowner Assistance Fund, the HAF is here for you. This is if you're behind on your payments because of some issues related to COVID. Well, that's where the HAF can help out. If you qualify, you can get up to 60,000 bucks. So give the hotline a call at 877-894-4663 or visit washingtonhaf.org. All right, it's time for Right Here, Right Now. It's time to talk about budget rebalancing and Budget Chair Teresa Mosqueta has been working on this. After that recent news about a drop in city revenue. So she made a press announcement about her work this week, which is a little unusual, but maybe not in terms of how council member on this role. Can I ask you about this? Because our colleague Marcus Harrison Green wrote a few months ago challenging Merrill with the idea that a budget is a moral document. And Councilmember Mosqueta seems to be taking that to the next level. Before we get into some of the nitty gritty details, how about some overall thoughts about her approach to this budget process?
Yeah, well, you know, she has, first of all, she has a tough task as a budget chair this year.
Yeah.
It's hard to find a way to squeeze in the council's priorities and, you know, and their earmarks, right? But also adjust for the recent bad news forecast that they got where, you know, general fund revenues are down, but what they call REIT real estate excise tax revenues are going to be down about $60 million, right? And that covers a lot of transportation projects, a lot of parks projects, some other infrastructure stuff. They've been using it a little bit for affordable housing projects. So none of the things, you know, and they're not things that they want to cut, right? So where do they find the money to cover that? So, you know, at the same time, I have to say, Mosqueta has taken an interesting approach to this because, you know, when the balancing package is first, the notion of a balancing package, which is what she just published, research introduced about four or five years ago, something like that. It was intended to be a shortcut where after, you know, all the council members get a chance to, you know, propose formally propose amendments. The chair finds out, okay, which ones sort of have consensus support, right? And we'll just kind of roll those into a package that we don't have to discuss and vote on every one of them individually. We can kind of have a consensus vote and approval, all that, because that's the part that we all agree upon. And then we can spend all our time focusing on the part that we don't agree on, right? But starting last year and really in a big way this year, Councilman Mosqueta has modified that notion, turned into kind of a platform for the budget chair to do some really significant legislating on her own. Her balancing package has 83 amendments that are sponsored by the budget chair that weren't present or discussed in, you know, an open forum earlier in the process and have no co sponsors.
Yeah, I noticed that just to, just to jump in real quick, there are a bunch of these BC things on, on that budget package there. And that indicated budget committee as if she had talked to a number of different people, but clearly she's taken a leadership role here. And I wanted to throw on top of that, because she is the sponsor of the Jump Start Payroll Tax. You remember that from a few years ago. She's really wielding some power there too, because I don't know if a lot of people want to cross her because she is the prime sponsor of that. And that payroll taxes ended up being the savior for a lot of these different programs in terms of providing extra revenue.
Yeah, you know, I think in a lot of ways it's become sort of a de facto secondary or, you know, shadow general fund, right? Where, you know, the, the council officially passed, you know, a policy that says this is how we're going to spend this money. There's a bunch of one-off exceptions in, in the budget this year where Mosqueta, you know, in some of her own balancing package, you know, budget, budget chair, budget committee amendments do specific earmarks of that money to cover specific projects or causes or things like that. So she, that, so not only do we have earmarks coming out of the general fund, we've got earmarks coming out of the payroll tax now. And, you know, I'd also just remark at some point, we have to stop calling it the jump, the jumpstart tax. Because, you know, if the, if the original notion of that was it was supposed to be sort of jumpstarting Seattle's economic recovery, you know, coming out of the pandemic, well, kind of not only we pass that in time, but, you know, just looking at the economic situation now, we don't really seem to be doing that now. So, you know, it's a payroll tax, you know, and it's a payroll tax. In fact, the payroll tax revenues may be going down in the, in the near future too, so.
Right, right. And we touched on, I didn't want to get into some of the details here, Kevin, in terms of what you saw here. 487 pages of goodness to go through here and a difficult task here for sure. But I want to talk about some of the cuts here because that's what she's talking about. Some of these choices, some of these new programs, as she put it, aren't getting funding, but there's some other intricacies here too. Can you talk about some of the cuts that you were really aware of when you look through this budget, budget package?
Yeah, there's definitely some cuts to the police department budget. They, and some of them are just kind of, you know, where are they deciding to officially, you know, put things? So the, the mayor wanted to move the parking enforcement officers back into SPD instead of keeping them S dot. The council isn't on board with that. So they're, they've, they've got an amendment in there to keep them in S dot for now while they go figure out, you know, whether they should go to the new communications center for, for
Right.
The CFCC. There's, the mayor also wanted to expand the unified care team, which, you know, some, some people, I think fairly actively describing as kind of the new navigation team in the city to handle both outreach and sort of the logistics of cleaning up un-sanctioned homeless encampments. The council is cutting that back and moving the outreach dollars over to the King County Regional Homeless Authority, Seattle. So sort of contribution to their budget. But, you know, the regional homeless authority has not been excited about doing outreach on the day of encampment removals. So, you know, they can, the council can put the money over there, but that doesn't mean it's going to get spent on outreach for that. So I think there's probably going to be a fight down the line there. They cut a million dollars that was to go to, you know, one of the mayor's pet projects, which is to deploy ShotSpotter in, in several neighborhoods around the city. So they, they cut that, cut recruitment and retention program money for SPD. So once you cut SPD, let's see, the, you know, as you mentioned before, the REIT revenues are coming low this year. So there's a bunch of cuts to S dot and parks programs that were funded by REIT. They, in, you know, in ads, they've added $4 million to continue supporting the lead program. They have increased the vehicle license fee by $10 and hopefully fund, continue to fund some transportation projects that need to happen. There's no other big tax increases in there, you know, and we'll see what, you know, this process isn't done. By Wednesday this week, the other city council members have one last chance to submit amendments. So it's going to be hard at this point because, you know, any amendment they submit has to be self-balancing.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's a very important point here. I did want to talk about one small piece here, a, a small budget ad, $1 million this, $1 million this year. And actually, $1 million the net going into mental health services for Seattle schools. This comes on the heels of demands from students from Ingram High School, other high schools around our area. They staged a walkout early this week, went to Seattle City Hall to demonstrate after that awful deadly school shooting at Ingram last week. The money from the city's proposed budget would go into the Department of Education and Early Learning Deal, the city department that interacts with the Seattle School District. But this gets complicated really quickly here, Kevin. Put simply, the city is not going to provide nearly the amount of funding these students were asking for, for more counselors, more safety measures in their schools. What's at play here?
Well, yeah, this is complicated. You know, if you spend some time, you know, tracking Seattle through government things, you quickly realize that there's a bit of a disconnect because the Seattle School District is not under the city of Seattle government. It's a completely parallel, separate organization, right? So, and, and this has been, you know, frustration for the mayor and for the city councils on an ongoing basis that, you know, sometimes they want things to happen in schools and they end up sort of passing their own funding for little things to kind of work around the periphery. And this is one of them, right? So, you know, they can't decide how the funding is for, or how many teachers are hired or all that stuff. But, you know, can they fund more school buses? Can they fund more mental health services like that? So they want a little bit more money in this year, not as much as the students have demanded, but a little bit more. But, you know, all they can do is basically throw money over the wall. And it's really, they, they can't hire this, you know, the city council and the city of Seattle can't hire mental health counselors to be in schools. That's something that the school district is going to have to do. All they can do is throw money over the wall and hope this school district does what they want with it.
Yeah, briefly on this part, I, I wonder if this issue might come up again when the city's families, education, preschool and promise levy, the FEP, comes up for renewal three years from now. I know that school nurses are part of the FEP, a specific mental health program set in place there. They do talk a lot about mental health supports when people go to behavior, when people go to the health clinic there at these different schools, these students. I just wonder about that. I really see the FEP and that levy there is another way that the city has tried to influence what's going on in Seattle schools.
Yeah, that will certainly come up again, you know, and, and another one is kind of edge cases is preschool, right? So, you know, the, the, you know, the school district runs a public primary, middle schools, high schools, and city of Seattle, through its Department of Education, Early Learning runs preschools.
That's right, the Seattle preschool program.
It's just, it's just, it's again, city of Seattle not having ownership of the school district, getting frustrated and kind of doing things on their own to try to achieve some of their own goals. It's very, it's a very strange dichotomy and it really does.
It is, it is. I've noticed that power struggle too between our schools and our city and very interesting stuff unfolding here. Well, folks, here's the deal. Another public hearing on the budget Tuesday night, the third and final public hearing there, 5:00 PM in council chambers. Or you can submit your input online or see it live on Seattle Channel. Make sure you check it out there. We're going to talk about something up next year, election fallout. Some races that were up in the air last week are settling down into cold hard facts. We're breaking down the details on now here this. Okay, all y'all listening out there, were you surprised by the November election results? You can tell me, it's all right. Well, you're not alone. Here's the deal, let's put it that way. I had a conversation with Will Casey from The Stranger about this last week. Here's what he said.
Well, I think it's just an indication of how tough it's going to be for Republicans to win statewide at all, unless they significantly sort of rebrand and try to tack, you know, back to the middle. And they've just, as JT Wilcox will tell you, you know, had a hard time enforcing sort of party discipline up and down the ballot. So I think, you know, so long as they're getting, clobbering King County where there's a, you know, a large portion of the state population.
Yeah.
And frankly, voters who show up, right? And I think that's going to be a challenge for them going forward.
Well, Kevin, other than it looks like Republicans are going to take a slim majority in the US House, I think there's a lot to what Will is saying here. This red wave did not happen. How did you see that playing out locally and statewide?
Well, yeah, so statewide, one of the things we're hearing now is now that all the votes are being counted, it's kind of going the opposite here that we're seeing a lot of, of, of the swing states in the country where the, it was predicted a week ago that Democrats were going to pick up a number of seats in both state houses. And now it's actually not looking like it. They're picking up a few, but it wasn't nearly the blue wave that people thought had happened a week ago. But there's a lot of, you know, looking locally and looking, you know, at some of the federal races. You know, it's turned out to be an interesting blue wave here. So Kim Schreier here in, in larger King County area has done better than everybody thought that she would do.
District, yeah.
Lu Cam Perez down in the third district has won now against Joe Kent. That's, that was definitely a surprise that that flip, flip blew.
Nationwide surprise on that one, yeah.
Nationwide surprise, yeah. You know, locally, I think one of the really interesting ones to look at is this whole, are we going to change our voting system to rank choice or approval voting? And while that race is still a dead heat.
Can we hold on that one for just a second? Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Can we hold on that one for a second? I wanted to split that one out. Yeah, please, please. I did want to talk about prosecutors race. I really saw this as an interesting movement too between maybe the more moderate, even conservative viewpoint that we really saw from Seattle voters, I think, last year in the election with the election of Ann Davis and Bruce Harrell, for that matter. And, and that conservatism or moderatism, whatever you want to call it, really didn't seem to play out here with the prosecutors races. Some thoughts on that one?
Well, yeah, so, you know, I looked at, I spent a lot of time looking at the demographics of the, of the return ballots.
Right, right.
Kind of watching from, you know, the early days, two weeks before the election, all the way up to, to, to day of. And just like, you know, we've been hearing about how young voters came out, you know, nationwide in larger numbers. They came out in a little larger numbers here in Seattle. It was a few percentage points higher, but it was sort of equally strong in the rest of King County, if not a little bit stronger even. It was a couple of percentage points more for, you know, looking at what was the percentage of the overall ballots that came from like under 35 voters. It was a little stronger in the rest of King County than it was in Seattle. And maybe that's just because there was already, you know, kind of more younger voters and Seattle as a whole is already, you know, younger. But, so, you know, I think in some ways that kind of affected the King County prosecutor race and potentially Kim Schreier's race, right? That, that
I see.
That the rest of King County, we kind of think of like Seattle is a deep blue kind of, you know, one big population center in King County. And then the rest is pretty red, particularly as you go, you know, south and east. And, and maybe it's a little more purple right now. Yeah, that's, that's certainly the way the numbers are starting to look.
Right, right. And in terms of how these numbers looked in comparison, because I was just, I remember talking with the King County election staff right after the election there and saying, you know, how are our rich numbers looking here? It doesn't look like it was as high as it was in 2020 for certain, which was a big, big year, a watershed year voting. But it wasn't exactly what King County elections thought it was either. They thought we'd be up and over 72%. I don't think we're going to reach that number. Any other thoughts about just who showed up and who didn't when it comes to the elections?
Yeah, so it looks like, it looks like now Seattle is going to be about 70%. And King County as a whole is going to be 67, somewhere between 67, 68%. So, yeah, a little short of what they originally predicted. You know, two years ago, it was about 88, 89%. So we're way off that mark and that's really no surprise to anybody that, you know, as opposed to a big presidential election with a lot on line. Obviously, there's a lot on line this year and, you know, you could argue democracy and, you know, you know, rights and, and economy role in this year. But, but, you know, medterms are never quite as much as a big presidential races. It was certainly a bunch more than last year, right?
Right.
In odd numbered year. And that's also to nobody's service. So we're kind of in the middle range. But, you know, again, about, about 70% here in Seattle, which is, you know, that's a good turnout for, for, you know, a November election here in Seattle. You know, I mentioned some of the things about, there was a little bit more youths, youth turnout this time, a little bit, you know, in, it's kind of hard to judge because the overall numbers were up, right? So we can kind of, what's the proportion, how did the proportion change? And the proportion was a little less older voters, you know, 65 and up.
Okay.
Little more under 35, kind of the middle range, was it about the same middle range of ages? Obviously, you know, the, some of the classic things we expect, like a big sort of youth turnout at the last minute happened again, right?
Yeah, there we go.
The younger voters tend to vote super late. Yeah, kids today. It was interesting to look at sort of what percentage came in through drop boxes. If you recall, two years ago, we had the whole Louis DeJoy thing where everybody was scared about the post office. So everybody was using drop boxes. It looks like it's gone back to normal again now. Lot of mail-in votes. So, you know, Dropbox is still get a lot of use here, but it's not overwhelming like it was two years ago.
Okay, well, I wanted to break out that one particular election issue that you mentioned ago, ranked choice voting. So on election night, it looked like this basic question of this Seattle measure, should we change our voting system at all was going to fail? That has changed over the past week. The yes vote is now ahead and it's actually still too close to call as we record this podcast early in the week. But Kevin, let's say this trend continues here. Voters overwhelmingly said, we want ranked choice voting, not approval voting, if we do make a change. Let's say this yes vote does hold up. What is that going to mean?
Well, so, you know, it's, it's interesting because ranked choice voting was really designed to be like a replacement, not only for, you know, for a particular election, but for like one of these primary general election systems, right? Where, instead of having the primaries or narrowing down to like two candidates and then, and having a, or one from each party, and then having a general election, you just do one. And you, you get to vote for a number of different candidates and it gets whittled down until the candidate with the broader support sort of gets the thing. So, but what they're proposing here for us is that we would do ranked choice voting for just the primary, right? And use that to whittle down to the top two candidates, right?
Right.
And, you know, in part, that's because the, the elections they would be doing this for are nonpartisan. So it wouldn't be like there was a socialist candidate, this Democratic candidate, that'd be Republican. It's like whichever two candidates, and it could be two Republicans, it could be, could be two Democrats, could be two socialists. Whichever two get the, you know, get the highest number of votes are the ones that, that, that would move on. And so that's a bit weird just to kind of start with that. But, you know, you could also say that's probably a good thing though, because, you know, we've seen in some of our races, like with the mayor's race last time, we can start with 10, 20 candidates, right? And with 20 candidates, you try to have, as you know, from hosting a number of candidate forums, you can't have a candidate forum with 20 candidates, right? Everybody gets two minutes at the end, it still takes an hour and a half.
No.
At the end of it, you don't really know anything more about anybody about this. So to be able to narrow it down to a primary to two, and then actually have a conversation with those two through the general election cycle, you know, could be a lot better, right? So that's, that's kind of, that's what we're going to be starting to, you know, what's the way to me?
Yeah.
So I guess the other thing I throw out there is that, you know, conventional wisdom is that
And I think you're struggling with it over the next, yeah, please.
The conventional wisdom is that ranked choice voting favors candidates of broader appeal. And that most often translates into more modest and centrist candidates. So is ranked choice voting going to push Seattle towards more moderate elected officials? Could that be trouble for somebody like Councilmember Swan, right? Well, it's not going to get implemented in time for next year. So the 2023, if Swan decides to run again, it won't matter for that. But probably sort of the one after that, it will, it will matter for, if assuming we do in fact enact ranked choice voting.
Right, and a good observation because it sounds like 2027 would be the first year that ranked choice voting would actually go into effect. I will say also, King County is working on this. They might introduce some legislation next year to talk about ranked choice voting on a county level. Also, the state has been working on this for the past seven years. They've had this local options bill where different jurisdictions can actually make these choices to hold a different type of election, like ranked choice voting, et cetera. On the flip side of that, I should also point out Clark County, San Juan County had ranked choice voting on the ballot. And overwhelmingly, in both cases, 57% plus of the voters said no on that. So a lot going on with this piece. And Kevin, I appreciate your, your back and forth on this, be, be something very interesting voters. I know what, so we're going to keep an eye on that one for sure. But I wanted to talk about something coming up here. So remember when your mom told you those video games are going to rot your brain? Well, now I say that to my kids, so that's very accurate. But Kevin wrote a very interesting piece on this in the South Seattle Emerald. It's our podcast gem of the week. I blame most problems I have in my life to my constant connection to my Atari 2600. When I was a kid, after playing combat, I dreamed of the day I could chase after another person in a maze, riding a tank and take out their tank by bouncing off of three different walls. So there's the proof that my brain is definitely rotted out here. But in all seriousness, you wrote a story in the South Seattle Emerald that's actually based on a real study to look into this question. Tell us about what you found, this relationship between video games and kids. People talk about it a lot. What's going on?
Oh, yeah, this, this has been a raging debate since you and I were kids, like do video games rot kids' brains? And, you know, and of course, it's important to put a historical context on that, right? Before we said that about video games, we said that about TV. We said that about radio when radio was first introduced, like, oh, no, people should be reading books, you don't want to radio. And, and even when they, when books were introduced, there were people, adults who said, no, that's going to rot kids' brains, right? So, so there's a long and glorious history of, of these kinds of questions, like, oh my God, is this going to be bad for kids, right? So, but a little while back, a group of researchers started, got funding to create this thing called the ABCD Study, the Adolescent Brain Cognitive Development Study, where they're collecting data, they've enrolled several thousand children and starting at age nine and 10. And they are giving them sort of, creating a database for them, including sort of battery, different kind of mental tests, demographic information. And they're doing MRIs on them so they can actually take a look at how their brains sort of are developing over time. And they can sort of keep going back and collecting more data over time as they go through their adolescence and kind of see what happens to them. Now, this is another means great sort of, you know, treasure chests of data that you can use to do a different, a whole lot of different kinds of studies on that. So there's a set of researchers from University of Vermont who pulled a sample out of this ABCD study to look at, based on like, do these, which of the kids play video games, which don't? And what difference do we see from that? And they found on at least, you know, a few of the cognitive measures of sort of their, their ability to get tasks done and those are hand-eye coordination and respond to commands and things like that. The gamers had more developed skills, right? But they also found sort of on the behavioral side that they had higher levels of attention deficit disorder, aggressive behavior, depression. So it's kind of a mix of those.
Yeah. Yeah, and just to jump in here, the whole challenge with this, and I know you love your data and you were about to bring this up. And I can see your wheels moving there. That whole idea of does the video game actually cause or is it just a correlation? That, that's still a difficult question here, I think.
Yeah, that's always a tough question with, with, with research studies is, you know, is one causing the other? But the nice thing about this being kind of a long-term study is they can probably figure out some of this. Because, you know, some of the kids who, you know, at the baseline at the start of this, aren't playing video games, will start playing video games over the next, over their adolescence, right? And so then when, as that happens, they can see, okay, well, compared to the ones who don't play video games now and don't start playing video games, do their cognitive skills develop and, or, you know, and/or do they develop more mental health issues? Or, you know, is it the flip side? Is it that people with more developed, naturally more developed cognitive skills get attracted to video games because they're better at them, right? Or is there something about video games such that people who may be more inclined to behavioral issues get drawn into them, right? That they give them, you know, some particular kind of feedback that, that is positive for them. So this, again, the benefit of long-term study is they can look at that. Because once they see like, yeah, if you just take a snapshot in time, it's harder to develop the causality. But if you watch over time, you can see like, okay, they start playing video games and then these other things start happening.
Right, right. I know this is a study that my mom would have signed me up for when I was a kid. I'm fascinated to learn how this one turns out over time here. It is time to wrap up here, Kevin, but I did want to ask you, as we talked a little bit about COVID shot last week, and that was a big deal. You did a little work in looking into the flu numbers that are really concerning this year. And I just wanted to pass that along, some, some, some data there that's not too good from a health standpoint.
Yeah, it's just, we're right at the beginning still of the flu season. And, and it's starting to pick up and it's picking up faster than on an average year, right? And so, you know, as we talked about before, the, the worry is because, you know, we all hid for the last two years because of COVID. You know, normally from year to year, people carry over a little bit of, a little bit of immunity from the flu from last year. So flu, you know, flu does this really interesting thing. Influenza bounces between the, between the northern and southern hemisphere, right? So, because it's really a winter kind of, you know, virus that people get. And, and it evolves a little bit with every step. So the flu shot that we're getting now is based upon the flu they saw in, saw in the is based upon the flu they saw in saw in the southern hemisphere six months ago, right? And the flu that the folks in Australia are going to be getting six months from now is based upon what they actually see for flu here right now, right? So there's this constant slow evolution of flu that happens as it bounces back and forth between the northern and southern hemisphere, right? And we're always trailing it a little bit, but not too bad. But what they're and and partly that's okay because we still carry over a little bit of immunity from, you know, from the last time we had flu. But what people are worried about is because we've all been hiding for the last two years, the number of cases of flu last year has been super low. And so they're worried that like, there's no kind of just general immunity left to flu because nobody's seen it for two years. So they're expecting this could be a really, really bad flu year because nobody's carrying around immunity right now. So go get a flu shot.
Right.
Great year to go get a flu shot.
Right, right. Absolutely. And and that's the bottom line. I keep saying to folks too, get that flu shot. Make sure you get that COVID booster too and and stay well, everybody. And Kevin, you too, thank you as always for joining me here on Seattle News, Views and Brews, where you can always find out what's brewing in local politics. This podcast is on all the major platforms. Look for See the bruise on Patreon too, to show your support for the show. Thanks for watching on Converge Media too. Next time.
Seattle News, Views and Brews is an independent production of Calanan Media Services. Copyright 2022.